This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board on Monday, January 23rd, 2012. Dr. Richardson, there are a number of items in the table file.
Yes, if you will take a look at your table file, you'll see there are additional personnel items for appointments, increase, decrease, and change in assignment. And then also, we have a third item for information, which is the recommended 2012-2013 and 2013-2014 school year calendars for your review tonight with the potential for approval on February the 13th.
Very good. If there's no objection, we will add these items to the agendas when you move forward. So we now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for members of the district to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay. It looks like there are not anyone here for that. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet the minutes of both the organizational meeting and the regular meetings, which were both held on Monday, January 9th. Is there a motion? Oh, sorry. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? So moved. Moved by Ann and seconded by Julie. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes from both the organizational and the regular meeting held on Monday, January 9th, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Those minutes are approved. All right, now on to announcement and recognition.
Okay, I have just a couple of announcements tonight. First of all, four of our students from Northfield Middle School and one student from Northfield High School will be participating in the 2012 Minnesota String and Orchestra Teachers Association Middle Level Honors Orchestra. This is a select group of string players from across the state who earned an invitation to play in the honors orchestra in grades seven through nine based on an audition recording of their playing. Of the entries made by Northfield Public Schools, Lily Dunlop on violin, Nick Dempsey on viola alternate, Cameron Gray on cello, and Jane Ludwig on cello, Molly Smith on violin, and Nicholas Palatier on bass were chosen. The Minnesota Middle Level Honors Orchestra will be performing on Saturday, February 18th at 11:15 a.m. in the Minneapolis Convention Center in conjunction with the annual Minnesota Music Educators Association Midwinter Clinic. So again, congratulations to those folks for, and wish them well in terms of their performance. Number two, I guess I would like to welcome our new Northfield News reporter, Addison Rorda. And Addison actually has been a reporter with the Furbow Daily News, which again is also owned by the same group that owns Northfield News, and so she is going to be a reporter going forward. So she comes to us with some experience already as an education reporter, and we hope to give her plenty more of good experiences. And then the third piece would just be to share with the community that myself and Evan and Noel did go to the presentation last Saturday by our District 25 legislators who shared some brief information about what they were seeing going forward into this legislative session, and also gave us an opportunity to share some questions and concerns that we had about specific things that were happening with funding and taxes going forward into this new legislative session, which they all promised would be a short one. We'll see how that goes. So again, had an opportunity again to represent the district and share information about our needs here in Northfield. And those are all the announcements I have for this evening.
Anyone else have anything to add? Julie?
I just wanted to thank Sarah Swan McDonald, the social studies teacher at the high school, for the open house that she did to showcase the student learning, service learning projects done by the high school students, and it was really great. And thank HCI, Healthy Community Initiatives, for their sponsorship and financial support of the number of service learning projects. And a number of them centered around bullying. In fact, one of them, they had gone to Greenville, 5th grade, and there was such an overwhelming response by that teacher and positive remarks that one of the 3rd grade teachers asked them to come back and do it for her class. So it's a great opportunity for the community to see what the service learning group does, and we thank Sarah for putting that together. It was a really fun night.
Good. I have two more announcements. Sarah Swan McDonald was very busy that week. She also had her group that had gone to the International Peace Conference presented to a peace and justice group at St. John's and then to a Sons of Norway group at St. Peter about their trip and some of the plans they have for bringing communities together in Northfield. And then I also want to remind the public that there is a really great art exhibit at the White Center. Mr. Beatty at the middle school and Dr. Neil Lutske collaborated with Carlton students and middle school students to do an art exhibit that involved numbers, and it's very exciting. Anyone else? Great. Okay. We will move on to the first item for discussion. It's a report from Greenville Park on their professional learning community.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for having me here today. Mary Wojcik is here with me this evening, and we will be presenting our professional learning community, actually across the three elementary schools, and we'll be presenting the physical education professional learning community because we thought that it would be a nice change of venue from the reading and math that we've typically done in 3rd and 5th grade in the past two years. Douglas Reeves talks a lot about the correlation between student achievement and co-curriculars and extracurriculars. William Camp recently did a study also on this, and he found that there's a causal relationship between kids who participate in co-curriculars and extracurriculars and student achievement. And although our physical education, media, art, and music aren't technically co-curriculars, we do dedicate a significant portion of a child's week toward these spring boards, toward those opportunities. And so there are standards for physical education, media, art, and music, and therefore our professional learning communities are studying the essential learning of their particular discipline, and I thought that physical education would be a nice change for us this evening. So what I plan to do is just show the video because it'll speak for itself. The first five minutes are a little rough with the audio, so you gotta kind of crane your ear a little bit toward the speakers, but we compensated for it by giving you all the subtitles so you can either read it or read it and listen to it. And then I gotta be ready at about 5 minutes and 30 seconds because I've got another part, and the video, audio will be good, and I'll have to get that down for you so we don't blow you away. So physical education, and then Mary and I will be available for comments, questions afterward, okay?
We will increase awareness of lifelong fitness components of other elementary students, 3rd through 5th grade, so that a minimum of 60% will demonstrate the fitness achievement level as measured by the Presidential Physical Fitness Test by May 2012.
So I think we talked about our essential learning, that we want to have the kids understand what tests we're using, and that want to understand why we're using them for their lifelong skills.
Well, the other part is setting goals. Getting them to try and set some goals around these to, you know, improve your time in half-mile or mile. Just every test that we take ties it into lifelong fitness, and hopefully develop a healthy, consistent exercise habit to improve.
So our students need to know different skills, pull-ups, sit-ups, mile, which is our endurance or half-mile, sit and reach, and shuttle run. And where did we say we're the lowest?
We're lowest in, we're the greatest in height, which is 10% lower than pull-ups, 26%. We're the shortest in pull-ups. So I'm hoping that when we do the flexed arm pain in the spring, that'll elevate some of them that did not make it to the pool.
So we should discuss pretty much our different scoring. Kids know how to do it, all the different tests, and they know why we're doing them.
Maybe you're not gonna get a, you know, maybe in the spring you're gonna get a fitness improvement award. So you improved all of your tests, even though you didn't make national or presidential, you still showed improvement. So your goal might be, I mean, looking at the pull-up, we do, even if it's, they go with their elbows straight, and they're almost somewhat bent, that is an improvement. So, and yes, that's a visual improvement that we see as the instructor.
What we will do when they don't learn it, we suggested, you know, bringing them in before school, and letting them have the opportunity to do some things so that they're not all in front of their peers. Test anxiety. So we've talked about more chances and opportunities to practice, so that's every unit, every day we practice during our warm-ups?
My question is, however, are we gonna do this for each, for everybody?
That's, and that's on here. We wrote that.
I think, the tough thing is that we're not gonna make a big difference, an issue at all. But just knowing that we have the issue, is moving forward, even if it's just part of during the, you know, kind of the instruction time, you know, having stretching or little things like that, would, is, it would be really good.
Right, and we're giving directions, sitting in a butterfly.
If we do a good job of, you know, a lot of the strength stuff, and just like those sorts of warm-ups, but, you know.
Static stretches.
We're showing that the flexibility isn't there, so that probably won't be a shit area that we need to focus on. So if we're explaining to them, well, hey, you know, you want this, we're gonna do some stretching here, but you also maybe need to do that. And one that's kind of like homework for you, to be able to get this, you know, for your goal.
Well, maybe that's something we incorporate in our newsletter article, too. Our weakest area that we see across 3rd through 5th grade in our presidential's fitness testing is inflexibility. And, you know, can you work by doing your homework, by reading in a straddle stretch, by, I mean, get the word out to the parents, and that's what we need, you know? What we did to spur these kids on, and Ryan took this on, is inviting teachers down to do any of, anything that we're doing, jump rope, sit and reach, and then we put the top teacher, and the kids just love it. And then we had students, like with our pacer, because I think that ties into our mile, and at least we've had kids come in either during our prep because they want to get better, and they don't want to do it in front of their peers. We had two last month, and they did improve. And so last year, we opened it up before school for those kids who we thought couldn't make it, and what we had about 12 that we thought could make it, and at least half needed, we invited them in. So that's just another way that.
Okay, I'm excited. First thing I was wanting to do is I want to review some of our standards that we're gonna try and make in the spring for our fitness testing. And we're gonna start, we're gonna do curl-ups today, we're gonna do push-ups today, we're gonna do sit and reach, and if we have time, we're gonna do shuttle running, time jumps. So we're basically gonna give you a short test workout on all of our fitness tests. And our goal today is to see where you're at, so that when we get to the spring, you know if we can make our goal. Now, you can see the push-up guy is in the place of position, correct?
Yeah.
You see how straight his body is? Your body should, try to keep your body out. When you're doing the push-up, does his body move or do the arms move?
Arms only.
Arms only, okay? For short distance, you should be able to work hard. You're only gonna enjoy the exercise portion, you want it tight, so you're gonna do it right. And elbows are gonna come up and touch the top of your knees, and then you're gonna go back down to your shoulder place, touch the band like you are right now.
You can do sit-ups, we're strengthening our abdominals, we're strengthening our backs. If you can't do push-ups and tight-ups, then get to your plank position either like this or down like this, and hold that plank position as long as possible.
I want your hands right underneath your shoulders, like this. I want you off your knees, okay? You're not even here. Like that, you don't wanna go like this. So I want, I want you to have a nice flat pad, hold it down here, okay? Keep your head down like this, and it's gonna say down, you're gonna go down, and say up. And as you're reaching, when you get to where you're over your spot, this is your whole game, just let your hair out of that tail, and sit and reach, hold it right. Ready?
Well, we need exercising. We do a lot of that.
And so, so P.E., A and R is just combined, we get the A and R, 60 minutes per day, so that would be 10 minutes a day.
10 minutes a day. Well, it's kind of like the beer up to play 60, I think we should at least do it an hour.
Yeah, so then it's not as hard when you're up to exercise.
Yeah, 'cause when you exercise, you can do all the other stuff, because if you don't, you won't be able to do some of those stuff.
So we get, we get help here as well?
So we're at Calipotatoes.
Maybe one of the main reasons we have this is to teach kids that if, maybe if you want to get a good career or something that you want to do, you should probably have some experience in everything. It's important to stay fit for future generations.
They want to keep us, they want to make sure that we can stay fit all the time.
So I guess just keep us fit, there's more to gain.
You have to have your back straight, you want, you need muscle memory, for example.
Awesome. All right, one-handed, yeah?
They do, exercise though, combined they play fun.
Play colored basketball.
At our fitness, and it's fun.
They, they don't criticize you, like some characters in books, like they get their competition, they do push-up, and push-up, and push-up. And they, they just say, oh, do the best you can, and try your best.
What I'd like to note, though, is that as with our reading and our math, you know, the real high-powered academic content areas we constantly talk about in education, the professional learning community in physical education at Greenville Park, Bridgewater, and Sibley all have the essential elements of a professional learning community. And one of the things I'd like to note is that they do have their essential learning, and it's not just another conversation about, you know, how's P.E. going? There are gonna be goals for kids, there's that formative assessment, just like we talked about in our reading and our math PLCs, and then they're answering the four questions as well. What do we want our students to learn? In this case, in this unit, it was the physical fitness as measured by the Presidential Fitness Award program. So it's a professional learning community in every regard. And then I just want to note also that, you know, at Greenville Park, Mary and Ryan, did you see that whiteboard? They're incorporating main idea into physical education, which is also the core of our essential learning in reading. And you have a word wall, too, don't you? Okay. So this is Mary Wojcik. Mary's gonna come on up and help me primarily actually be the answering device if you have any questions about our physical education professional learning community.
Good evening. That just got me a little emotional because I hadn't seen that before, and it was, it was nice.
I have a question. First of all, thanks for putting that together, and also to note, too, that as a PLC, you're combining the teachers from all the three buildings, so you're a little bit unique in that way, so that collaboration is great. And I'm just wondering, from your perspective as a teacher, how you feel about the Presidential Physical Fitness Test as your main guide for the essential learning, and how often that test gets updated, and how you, is it the best choice you have out there? Is there some shortfalls or, to that test that you see, or just, I guess, your perspective on the test in terms of, you know, what it's asking the students to achieve?
This is our first year that we're doing this, and since I've been here for quite a while, and we decided to do it, to take the presidential because it spans the entire country, and it's been proven that it's pretty effective since the 1960s when it was developed. And it tests all different areas. It tests the strength, it tests the flexibility, the cardiovascular. Whereas we had started our PLCs with just the pacer, which was a different type of test, which basically just tested aerobic fitness. So we're, we're looking at the whole child as far as their physical fitness, not just one small area. So like I said, this is our first year, and this is one of the only standardized tests that really is available for 3rd grade, 3rd, 4th, 5th, and then it goes up to, you can test all the way to 17. And there's standards. The standards seemed, I don't know the last time they were updated, but I know as a kid I took the Presidential Fitness Test, and I still have the sheet. I looked back, they have changed since I took the fitness test as far as, you know, the distance you ran and the flexed arm. So standards have been adjusted, and the kids are just gobbling it up. They love it. They, they love to test something different than just running. They do love the running, though. We still do the pacer every month, so I hope I answered your question.
No, perfectly. That's, that's exactly what, so it seems like it's a, it's a good test in that, you know, the curric, you know, the essential learnings are sort of already there, and as you said, it sort of tests all areas of their ability, so it sounds really good.
And we did find across the three schools, our weakest, and I think it will be our pull-ups, we're definitely weak in our upper body, especially the girls. And then we did find that flexibility, even in our young students, is very weak, or not flexible. So, you know, and as far as that, we are adapting some of our warm-ups and different things that go home to those two areas.
Well, and, you know, overall, that's awesome because that, you know, prevents injury and all the other kinds of things that result from lack of flexibility. Perfect. Thank you.
Jeff?
I think it's deja vu all over again for me, as Joe Garro once said. I actually, looking at that, had memories coming back as I opened up Greenville when it started in 4th grade. So I did the presidential.
You did the presidential.
Yeah, I did the presidential. And, you know, the only thing that struck me on that was, you know, I really remember the presidential's, is, pull-ups are always hard to do for kids, and, you know, and I don't know why that is, or if they're getting better or whatever, because that was always in if they've changed that or not, because that was one of the big determining factors, you know, which level you were at with the pull-ups and stuff. But, I mean, I, I remember that, and I think it had such a nice theme of, of, you know, achievement and trying to, trying to get that done. And I was, you know, three brothers, and we were, you know, two other brothers, and we're pretty competitive with that, so we were always kind of comparing back and forth, you know, on how well we did with that kind of thing. But, yeah, I, I remember that like it was yesterday watching it. So I give myself credit for, for watching it, and also I, the district for having a really good-looking gym, it looks good.
Anyone else?
I just have one. I just have to say, Mary, thanks for being such a great P.E. teacher. She knows all the kids in the district just about.
They know a lot.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. It's a great presentation.
So thank you, and I would like to echo the, what Julie was saying about that parent communication. I know one of my standout conferences last year was at the middle school with P.E. and getting a sheet with flexibility issues to work on at home with my child. And I think hearing that, you know, that that's happening at the elementary, I just think that's really important. And with all those sports and the injuries, I mean, I just really applaud your efforts, and it's, it's neat to see. Thank you.
I think it's really powerful, again, to see how the PLC process can be used effectively across the board. And in this case, you really, you touched on all the different pieces, you looked at your essential learnings, you reviewed the data, you saw the areas where you felt the greatest improvement needed to be made, you thought about how are you gonna help kids to work on those pieces, you offered differentiated opportunities for kids to come in during prep or before school so that they could practice, and especially if maybe they were a little shy about their performance. So really, if you take a look at it, again, you know, we, as Dave said, we continually are talking about the core academics and how professional learning communities help us to really focus there. But it is great that we can see that happen, and I really appreciate how this piece shows the collaboration between all of the elementary physical education teachers in terms of working on a goal together and being able to look at progress. So at the end of the year, we're gonna be able to see how many more students we have that are presidentially fit. Now, the only question I have, and see, I think I took the president, no, I was before the, the presidents didn't worry about fitness then because the dinosaurs were chasing you, but is it, is it this way or this way for the pull-ups?
Actually, they changed it. You can choose either this way or this way.
You can choose either way, okay. Very good.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, our next item for discussion is a report by Stephanie on the presentation of our financial forecast for 2012-2013 and the general fund budget recommendations. And board members, you should have a handout.
Be here and discuss the budget forecast and recommendations for next year. And as I was working through the information and preparing this, I thought, what a difference a year makes from last year when we were going through this process. And while the short-term outlook for next year, as we look to next year's budget, we have a greater deal of certainty or knowns in building that budget, the unfortunate side of that is the long-range forecast still remains just as, as uncertain as it was a year ago. So as we discuss the topic tonight, what I'd like to review is the reality of the state's financial condition as well as the financial condition, the current financial condition of the district, the assumptions used to build the financial projection, the long-range forecast, and next year's budget recommendations, as well as the parameters and timeline that are built into the 12-13 budget data that you'll be seeing tonight. As we look back for, as, at a summary of the 2011 legislative session, we're all painfully aware of what happened last year's, at last year's legislative session. But just to recap, they began their biennium planning with a $5 billion deficit, and with K-12 education making up 40% or approximately 40% of that biennium budget. The uncertainty on what the funding situation would be like for us was, was, looked very grave, you know, wondering where those, that, that budget deficit would be resolved. Good news, bad news? Good news, we didn't face any major, major cuts that we thought may happen. The bad news is that nearly 2/3 of that budget deficit was resolved with one-time budget solutions, which they will not have available to them as they begin their budget planning for the next biennium. $2.3 billion of those one-time budget actions came from the payment shifts of K-12 education funding. And just to review, there's two types of shifts that the state can implement on K-12 funding. The, the first is fairly straightforward, it's the delay in the entitlement, or, or the revenue that our students our students generate. And so when they increased that entitlement, the delay of that entitlement, rather, from 30% to 40%, that is the one-time savings that the state got. The unfortunate part of that is, in the next year, when they're paying 40% of what they delayed, they're also paying 60% of that current year. So they're automatically back to paying 100% in the next year. That's why it's a one-time budget solution. It only can help them resolve their deficit the year that they increase the delay. The second shift that we don't talk about as much, but it is a reality, is the early recognition of property taxes. And what that does is the state, it allows the state to delay additional funding to K-12 districts, and requires that they recognize the property taxes that the districts receive in that May and June timeframe, which typically are not available for use until the next year's budget cycle. The problem with both of these is that they significantly affect the district's cash balances. And while it was good news that we didn't have major cuts in funding, our cash balances have suffered. And another significant issue with that is it does create an unsustainable budget situation for the state as it moves forward. These next three slides I brought back, we actually looked at these when our auditors came to discuss the final audited financial data from the fiscal year 2011. But I thought it was just a good picture to review and look at what these shifts have done to our cash balances. If we look back at 2007, this first year, when the district was just coming out of the difficult financial situation that we found ourselves in back in 2005 and 2006, and statutory operating debt, we saw our cash balances begin to climb, restoring the financial health of the district. That coupled with the community's passage of the referendum, really, we saw that cash balance get restored to a really healthy situation in 2009. But at that point in time, then, is when the state started implementing the shifts, increasing the delays. And then this recent year, in 2011, the property tax, early recognition of the property taxes was laid on top of that. In looking at specifically that early recognition property tax shift, and how that affects the picture, the outlay of our funding, if we look back at the 2009, 10 fiscal year, this is how our funding sources broke down. This large portion, 66%, is the state sources, identified as the state sources. Typically, a district would see their state sources be around 70% to 75%, depending on the district and the demographic of the students. What happened in 2009, 10, as the district, or as the state was balancing its budget that year, they gained relief here with this 9.9%, which is representative of federal dollars. That's when the large amount of stabilization dollars came from the federal government, as well as federal special ed dollars through stimulus. And so that typical 70, 75% of state aid was reduced down to the 66%. And then the 3.3% is that other miscellaneous, and 20% represents the property tax payment, or funding sources. But if you just keep your eye on that 9.9% and we move forward one year to 1011, you see that federal dollars drop back down to 5.2, which is still a little higher than typical. But the state sources went from 66 to 63. So how did they do that? They did that by requiring districts to recognize that property tax early. And that's represented by that 8.9% on the right side of the screen here. That 8.9% of property taxes is not an additional amount of property taxes that we collected from property taxpayers. That would have typically been recognized in the 2011, 12 year. And the one-time shift that this creates, you know, we're back to that 8.9% creating a hole, if you will, in what was recognized in the 11, 12 year. And so we'll just be shifting the 12, 13 forward, and we're back to 100% again. So really, the resolution to the state budget deficit was temporary. And we anticipate the challenges being right back on the table next year, as they're dealing with the next biennium. In addition to cash balances, the fund balance is also another important indicator of the financial stability and health of the district. And while our cash balance has suffered, our fund balance has remained fairly healthy. We did end the fiscal year of 2011 with an unreserved fund balance of $7.8 million, or approximately 20%, which is very good. Standard practices, best practices indicate that 16% is a really healthy, good goal for governmental entities to have. And so this, you know, indicates the strong financial position that the district is in as we move forward with the financial uncertainties. This is a picture we often, you know, bring back to reiterate, you know, how quickly the fund balance did climb when it first, when the district first came out of statutory operating debt back in 2007, with basically zero fund balance, you know, $27,000, or $27,000 in fund balances is basically nothing. But through the passage of the operating referendum, some very difficult decisions made in the district, that fund balance did restore very nicely. But it does contrast quite a bit, those same years when we looked at that cash balance, how it had that peak in the middle. This has been a steady decline, whereas the cash balance is not, is not representative of that same type of climb. When we look at the two sides of the equation in building the budget, we have our expenditures that were at $38.1 million in our audited financial statements for fiscal year 2011. And of that 79% or $30 million was representative of salaries and benefits. And what is so significant about this, you know, it's very typical for a school district to have about 80% of its expenditures in salary and benefits. However, oftentimes, those same districts will have transportation as part of their operations. And so the salary and benefits of their school bus drivers and their mechanics, et cetera, make up that 80%. Whereas with Northfield, because we outsource, that's considered, or we partner with our business partners, Benjamin Bus, that's considered a contracted services. So it's not under our salary and benefit line items. So it just really indicates how lean the district runs on its non-salary items. When even having a large segment of our pupil support services and transportation being a contracted services and still maintaining 80% salary and benefits, it's really just a good indicator on how those non-salary items have been targeted most for reductions in budgets. Our total budgeted expenditures for the fiscal 12 year are $39 million. And then when we look at the other side of the equation, our audited revenues for fiscal year 11 were $40.2 million. And the major influencing factor of the revenue is the enrollment, which drives about 75% of the revenue. Our total budgeted revenue for fiscal year 12 is $39.9 million. And as we look at beginning the projections, the first place we look to is our enrollment. And the October 1 enrollment, there's several steps to getting to the actual multiplier that multiplies our per pupil funding source, and I'll walk through those. But this is just a snapshot in time of October 1. And that's a significant date in taking student enrollment counts each year. It does drive a few different funding sources, such as compensatory dollars for the subsequent year. However, it is a snapshot in time. And we do use that as a indicator in comparing each October 1 enrollment to what the final ADMs are for that year, to build a proportional relationship. And we use those equations and formulas to project forward what we think the ADM will be when we finalize this year. But what struck me, this is a really simplistic graph. I have not used it in any of the presentations before. But as I just mentioned, enrollment drives about 75% of the revenue. And we can see where, when the district was in its most difficult financial situation here, our revenue was growing fairly nicely. When the district started stabilizing its financial condition is when our enrollment really leveled off. And since then, we've had that steady decline, just a gradual drop-off. This year, we've talked previously that we have some early indications of good news with the October 1 enrollment from this year, which is, which is very, very good. We hope that continues to rise. But what did strike me, if you don't mind, I'll step back a few slides to this. The fund balance, having the steady increase, restoring the financial health, while the same thing that drives 75% of the revenue is, during that same timeframe, having a steady decline, was, it's just very impressive. And it's just another indicator of the strong community commitment through passage of the referendum, the very, very difficult budget decisions that have had to have been made over the last six, seven years. That's a very difficult thing to do when your revenues are declining like that, or what drives your revenues is declining, and your financial health is restoring at the same time. So I wanted to make sure to include that graph for you. Maybe I'm, being a finance person, I'm a little more impressed with it than a lot of people. But I thought, wow, I should overlay those two graphs. Really should. But I didn't. So from the October 1 enrollments, like I said, we do that relationship calculation of what our October 1 enrollments are, and what ultimately the final average daily membership turns out to be. So we can use those calculations to roll forward and predict what we believe the projections for enrollments will be. And, you know, it seems like a fairly, like it would be a fairly simplistic, you know, we get a per pupil or per student funding formula. But of course, in K-12, it's just not. There's several steps with the enrollment numbers that have to take place. And oftentimes, it can create confusion over, you know, what students are you counting? What are you multiplying 5124 by? How are you getting your dollars? And so I just wanted to include these, this information in the presentation again, because we do take those same students, the ones that are here on October 1 and every other day, and we track their attendance all year long to get the average daily membership, their average attendance throughout the whole year. And then depending on their grade level, each of those students, their average is weighted. You'll see this 712 is weighted at 1.3, with the concept that it costs more to educate a high school student. With all of the different electives that they have to have for graduation, et cetera, it costs more. Of course, with kindergarten still being, receiving funding for only half-day K, that's why our kindergarten students are weighted at just .6. And it's what drives the need for the tuition for all-day K, because we still don't have funding as a K-12 school district for all-day K. So as we roll forward using that cohort survival methodology of moving our enrollments forward, we're looking at a projected ADM for 2012, 13 of 3,823. It's this top graph here. And by applying those weighting factors that we just reviewed on the previous page, we get down to the weighted average daily membership, which is the 4,432. And we're almost to that multiplier that we multiply by the per pupil, but not quite. We have one more calculation to do. When we take the trend that we've seen in recent years, we roll that forward and project it out. And you'll see this dark green line here, second from the bottom, really shows the change from year to year. And it really is holding constant. Some might wonder why, you know, we've seen an uptick on the October 1 enrollments. It's slightly higher. Why aren't we showing our trend line going up? Well, we take multiple years into that calculation. We do weight the most recent year more heavily. However, we do still have to take into account that there's been handful of years where we've had declining enrollment. So we don't want to get too optimistic. But we do kind of include that all in the mathematical equation. The last step in getting to what our multiplier is for our funding formula is taking the adjusted marginal cost pupil unit. And what that is doing is really protecting districts that are experiencing large declines in enrollment. It takes 23% of your previous year's weighted average daily membership, and 77% of this year's. So if they don't, districts don't feel 100% of that loss of enrollment in any given year by calculating the AMCPU. And this is, this several-step process is what can make it somewhat confusing when you're trying to discuss just the basic, what seems to be a basic simplistic per pupil formula. It's just that there's so many steps in calculating that pupil unit. So as we look at the assumptions built into the projections, we have the fund balance that we've discussed previously, set at 16% of the overall expenditures, which is standard best practice for governmental entities. We do have our projected increases built, so that they're reflecting salary and benefit increases between 2.9 and 3.1%. This is a little bit more predictable than last year, because we do have our largest bargaining unit, as you know, with the contract that's been settled. And so being able to incorporate those known cost increases into the budget makes it a little bit more predictable. The non-salary and other operational costs, we have the inflationary factor of 2%, which represents an aggregate increase of 3.04% on the expenditures. As we look at the revenue assumptions, we do have the increase in the per pupil funding of $50 that the special session arrived at last year for both 11, 12, and 12, 13. But beyond that, we've held that funding formula flat in the projection. The other change in revenue from last year's legislative session was the literacy aid. And I do have to say, the literacy aid at this point is not factored into the forecast and the financial information that you see at this point, because the restrictions are still very uncertain in how districts need to write those literacy plans, and how that revenue needs to be used. There just hasn't been a great deal of guidance. So we would anticipate either incorporating that into the final budget before it's presented to you, or if we don't have that information at that time, we would anticipate a budget amendment after we get into the next year, when we have more information and we know how that has to be utilized. Of course, on the levy side, the second largest source of funding for us, the referendum renewal is included with this budget projection at the maximum amount allowable, as the voters had approved with the inflationary increase. And we do have reflected in the 12, 13 budget parameters, the one-time reduction for the other post-employment benefit levy that we discussed at our levy certification meeting back in December. Other non-formula revenues are held constant, and all of these together represent an aggregate increase of 2.48%. This sheet here is in your packets, in a large version. But it is our forecast, our five-year forecast. And there's seven years represented on the forecast itself. The very first year is the most recent audit that you've received from our audits, our independent auditors, the 10, 11 year. That's in the very first column. And then the second column is the budget year that we're currently in. Incorporated in this is the budget amendment that was presented to you, the revised budget data back in December. And then the five subsequent years are projections, with the first 12, 13, 13 year being our next year's budget planning cycle that we're just beginning. With all the assumptions that I outlined for you and that we've just discussed, the district does find itself in a very favorable situation moving forward. We are able to, we always benchmark against the SOD levels. And we are able to stay away from SOD for the five-year forecast in all years. And only in the last year, at this point in time, in 2016, 17, do we not hit our recommended target of 16% fund balance. And again, this is holding that revenue per pupil funding flat after this next year's $50 increase. It does incorporate the referendum passage at the max with the inflationary. I think the largest uncertainty is the future of expenditures, the future, you know, benefit expenditures. I think the largest uncertainty is the future of expenditures, the benefit expenditures, those types of things. It's held fairly consistent, well, it's held exactly consistent to the parameters that I outlined at that aggregate 3.04%. And also, I guess, the other large uncertainty is what might happen with the state funding situation. We know, you know, we're already at 60-40% delayed in aid, early recognition property tax. There's not much, there's not much other one-time solutions that can come from K-12. Maybe increasing the delay a little bit more, but absent funding cuts, you know, there's not many other solutions that they may be able to look to K-12 to gain. But overall, I mean, this does look very favorable, and it really does reflect the, again, the community support through the passage of the referendum. That's all incorporated in here. And prior to that, it was a much greater cliff that we were looking at in just a few short years from now, and so it does look like a very stable outlook at this point. So just to reiterate from that forecast, what's incorporated then for the 2012-13 years, an estimated revenue of $40.9 million, estimated expenditures, excuse me, at $40.1 million. And this provides for approximately $800,000 of general fund surplus to remain in the fund balance, as we indicated to the voters that it would, to offset future reductions that may be realized from the state. In addition to the budget parameters, I've just included a few key budget development calendar items, and you also have a full calendar within your packet as well. On the February 13 meeting, we would ask the school board to adopt the resolution requiring the administration to make additions and reductions in programs. And then we also have the key dates that the various components of the budgets that will be presented to you would arrive, so that, you know, when we get towards the June timeframe, and that final budget meeting would just be that comprehensive budget document, but you would have plenty of time and several opportunities to discuss the various components of the budget in greater detail. So I won't read through all of those dates, but that is the proposed calendar that we have before you tonight. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions or review any additional information.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Yeah, board members?
No?
Sometimes the time the community is individual and asks for a definition between the fund balance and the cash balance. To contrast those two for us and them.
Sure. The cash balance is really what we have, cash on hand, cash investments. It's the liquidity of the district. It's what we, it's our resources we have to make immediate payments to our obligations, make payments to employees for salary, for benefits, to pay our bills. Fund balance is more of, in the private sector, we would call it equity, equity in the corporation. It's really the financial condition. It takes into account all of your assets and all of your liabilities, and it's much more of an accounting or a financial condition term, not necessarily cash on hand and in the bank. Historically, governmental entities used to do all of their accounting and reporting on a cash balance, or a cash basis, and so it was much more one-to-one comparison. But in years, you know, with all the Gatsby statements that I'm sure you remember a few being before you, they've tried to move the governmental sector more towards a full accrual or private sector accounting base, and so the fund balance has become much more a center of focus on that. Does that, does that help?
Yes, thank you. The line for the 2012-13 year where it refers to the referendum amount, is that the amount that is the maximum approved, or is that the amount that we actually approved for levying this year? Because I recall we've levied less than the maximum amount for this year's, right?
Right. On here, the referendum is what is voter-approved. And so the, what we did not levy, the other post-employment benefit, would actually be in another category of non-formula revenues. So if you look under the budget year of 2011-12 and look down to that last revenue line item, where it says 8.894 million, right above the total there, look to the column under 2012, that amount drops to 8.08 million. That's where that levy revenue decrease resides. Does that answer your question? Is that what you were?
I guess I just wanted to clarify for people who aren't, who are looking at this, but we are actually levying less than the amount that the voters approved.
You're absolutely right, and it's on that total projected non-formula revenue where that is represented.
Thank you.
Julie?
I just wanted to thank you for once again explaining the AMCPU, because I like to hear it every single time I say, oh yeah, that's right. Question, we have the district finance advisory committee that meets and takes a look at the district's finances as a separate entity from the school board and yourself. Did they meet at all to come up with some of these sort of projections?
They have not. What was used in the assumption is what has been defined through the legislative session with the funding formula. Because we are heading into the second year of the biennium, we do at least know right now, absent any changes in this next legislative session, what our funding will be, unlike last year when we didn't. And also, we have, like I said, a large majority of our expenditure segment is also known. And so the assumptions that are built in is based on, you know, what we actually know of through legislative session, contract settlements, et cetera.
Okay. No, I think it's a really good plan. I think your assumptions are good. We're assuming then that the state will provide no new funding, so we're being cautiously optimistic.
We are. I do have the $50 per pupil increase for the 1213 year that the legislative session had landed on last year. So we have that this year and next year. And we also know that we should be receiving literacy aid, but that is not included in here. Not to be overly cautious, just because of those restrictions are so uncertain, and we don't know if there's going to be specific restrictions on how we spend those dollars, so we thought it would better, it would be better to keep those off the table in case there are some tight restrictions tied to them, so it doesn't appear as though it's just general funds for us to appropriate within our budget.
No, I think that was really smart to do that.
Other questions? No?
You had one slide of pupil unit calculations. I'll have to go through your presentation. Yes?
Changes in some weighting factors, but I'll defer to you, Dr. Richardson.
Yeah, I would just say, this is something that is really, I think it's been some longstanding belief that there were additional costs in providing secondary programming, especially 712, where you had lab classes, where you had classes that required more varieties of equipment and specialized materials and so on. The reality is, I think, the two or three different times that they've actually worked through and tried to make calculations, it doesn't necessarily work out quite the way they thought it would. But at this point, again, until the state comes back and recalculates that, we have to operate with what they give us with numbers, because that's, those are the numbers that are used by the state to generate the weighted calculations and the weighted dollars. But no, statistically, if you would go back and say, do we really spend 1.3 FTE on every single high school student or middle school student, the answer probably would be no. At the same time, what this doesn't include either is the impact of our special education students that may cost four FTE or more.
So that number doesn't reflect the funding per student, that reflects the estimation of an FTE per student?
Yes. And the idea that those students that are at the secondary level, the programming that is required, the specialist teachers that are required, the additional equipment and lab space and whatever, the estimate always, I think, out of tradition, has been it costs more to do that than to put kids into a 30-by-30-foot classroom and teach first grade or second grade. But the reality is, that isn't necessarily the case, but it is the best numbers that the state can give us right now. So we basically live with them.
The cynical side of me says that number is, moves all over the map. When I came on the board, the 712 was, or at least 9 through 12 was 1.5. And I suspect this is a number that is not probably debated in legislature. And so some statistician could go in the back room and move this number around to be able to change the funding for our public schools.
But the approval for this does come from the legislature. The legislature sets those amounts. And you're right, the other one that's changed just in the last few years is kindergarten.
Yeah.
Very, not very long ago, was about 5.5.
So I'm more cynical, and I, thank you for correcting my cynicism. No, you'd have to have a loose definition of statistician.
Yes.
Well, I suspect that number for them is out about four or five places beyond the decimal.
Other questions for Stephanie?
I had a couple. I wanted to just make sure I understood the assumptions on the forecast going beyond what we, the biennium budget that the legislature. So we're looking at the per pupils holding steady. We're not thinking that they're going to rise, and we're not thinking they're going to fall. We're thinking the state aid is holding steady. They're not going to cut. In the past, we've looked at sort of modest gains in state aid, and we're no longer looking at that. And I wasn't sure in terms of the assumption of payback of the delay of funding. I know on Saturday, we heard talk of Racino potentially splitting money with the Vikings to, you know, help pay back delays. So I wasn't sure if we're thinking of, we just don't think that's going to get paid back in this forecast.
I would, this is my opinion, no, I don't think the state will be able to pay it back. It will be huge to, I'm just flipping back several slides. It's such a large task for the state to be able to pay that back, because just like the one-time savings that they get, say, when they increase the delay from 30% to 40%, when they start to pay it back, they may be paying 110% or 120% of what they would ordinarily pay, because they're making up those old payments. But for us on our side, what that would affect is really this graphic, is our cash balance. It would restore those balances in our cash and investment pools that would be more readily available to pay, you know, for salaries, benefits, non-salary costs, more of a banking function. So as they start to pay it back, it will be a very significant challenge and pressure on the state budget, but really, for our standpoint, it will just be restoring our cash, much like it's diminishing it. So there won't be any added resources that we would be able to budget.
Right. Good. Thank you.
And I think that's a really important point. What the state does when they do a shift is that they take out an IOU with each school district, and they basically say, we'll gladly pay you Tuesday for the work you got to do today, and then we'll pay you back sometime in the future. But when they start paying that IOU back, that does not give us one penny more of additional spending authority. And, you know, we build that forecast based on our spending authority in terms of revenue being received. So what's a little difficult with this is that, you know, anything that's going to be coming back, and again, we figure that over the course of the last five or six years with the shift, they owe us about $7.5 million that they're going to have to pay back eventually. But all that will actually do is change that cash balance. It will not change one penny, the forecast or the projection, because that's set not based on cash balance, but based on fund balance. The other concern, obviously, that we always have, is that when they begin to give it back, they will go out in the streets and tell us about how much additional money school districts got. And they will say, you're getting $200 or $300 million back in shift dollars through Racino or whatever the thing is. And then we'll have to try to help explain to our community, that doesn't add one penny to our budget. All it does is pay us back for what there was before. I think maybe the best way to think about it, and I hearken back, Noel always has a good, you know, common sense discussion. It would be like if, you know, you basically got, you know, took out an IOU, and so you were running on the IOU dollars, and then the, or at least the credit that you were receiving, because you had this IOU in your portfolio of goodies, and you start getting that money back from the IOU, does that mean you have any new money to spend? No. All it means is that your IOU is now more funded with cash than it was in the past. That's really important, I think, for people in the community to understand, because paying it back, whether it's Racino, or because they have a budget surplus or whatever, will not give us one penny of additional money back. And we basically have floated a huge IOU for the state over the last several years, which I guess it's fortunate that the biggest bank in the state are the school districts in the state, because we're floating the state at this point.
Any other questions?
Good job.
Thank you very much, Stephanie.
Thanks.
Good job.
Okay. Items for individual action. We have one, which is based on the report you just heard, the administrative general fund budget recommendation. So we have the superintendent's recommendation for a motion to approve the proposed administrative recommended budget plan and budget development calendar for the 2012-2013 school year, as was just presented. So do I have a motion?
No.
Motion by Ann?
Second.
Second by Carrie. Any discussion? I know we just had some questions, but Julie?
I just wanted to thank Stephanie for such a really good presentation for a sound budget recommendation and for your work, especially for the way that you so succinctly and clearly explain. I feel like I can really repeat and actually explain it to someone else, which for me, that's a big thing. So I appreciate it.
Any other discussion? And I would echo what Julie said. I think, and some of these salient points, that it's really important that the community knows, really came through with your PowerPoints. So, all right, so we have a motion and a second for the superintendent's recommendation. All in favor of approving the recommendation to, for the proposed administration recommended budget and plan and budget development calendar for the 2012-2013 school year. Say aye if you approve.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, on to the items in the consent grouping. And as Dr. Richardson mentioned, there were a few personnel items included in this consent grouping. Is there anything that anyone wants to pull from the consent grouping?
Yeah, the pay equity report.
Okay. All right. We will be pulling the pay equity report from the consent grouping. So why don't, yeah, why don't we go ahead and we'll look at the rest of the consent grouping that you have in front of you, which includes the financial reports, grant exceptions, the personnel items, as well as the ones that were in the table file. So So, excluding the pay equity report, do I have a motion to approve the consent grouping? Noel? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. I've got a, a motion and a second to approve the items in the consent grouping excluding the pay equity report. All those in favor of approving those items, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So, we pulled the pay equity report as a separate item from the consent grouping.
I guess the, the issue I have in, in looking at it is that I don't see that, I mean, this doesn't show me that it's a pay equity report. What I see is a lot of raw data, but it doesn't tell me, or it's not clear to me how this tells us whether we're meeting our pay equity obligations or, or not. And that's the issue.
Yes, I guess, Matt, why don't you step up to the podium, because I think that'll be helpful. Basically, I think, as people need, need to remember, we, we complete a pay equity report in Minnesota every three years. I believe it's three. And at that time, basically, we go through and review all the data. And again, the purpose of a pay equity report is to determine if there is a significant variation between the pay and benefits for female-dominated groups. Again, think food service, office employees, et cetera, and male-dominated groups, such as custodians, head custodians, and so on. And there is a very complicated set of calculations that's behind this particular document, where we have to load all of the data and information about both salary and benefits for all of those employees. And Matt, why don't you just talk them through a little bit about what you and Molly, as well as Kathleen, do in this process?
So, the pay equity report, while it's a one-time piece that we submit every three years, is really an ongoing life cycle. Many, many years ago, the district completed the first pay equity piece, which takes all the jobs in the district and uses what we call the decision band method to what we call band and grade positions. Obviously, the superintendent is at the top of that list with the most significant number of points. And really, you get more points and a higher band and grade based upon how much autonomy you have over your job, what kind of decision-making power do you have, those kinds of pieces. So, positions, and this is not just within our school district, but within all different entities, if I have the same kind of tasks that I do each day, I obviously have a little bit less of a point value, because I have less decision over how those jobs, or how those daily tasks are made. The more authority I have over those decisions, the higher number of points. And when we look at that, we also then look at different classes in terms of whether a class is female-dominated or male-dominated. There are three tests, and I'm going to see if I can pass the Governor Rick Perry test here, which is...
Three. Number one?
Three, yes. The first one, one of the ones is taking a look at disparate with salaries in terms of between female-dominated classes and male-dominated classes, and with, I believe, a 10% piece there. Another test that the state looks at is what they call years to max. Our consultant, Kathleen Murphy, who we have worked with the last several times on this, is really an expert. She's been doing this for school districts and other public entities for more than 20 years. And she says, school districts typically always have a lot of trouble with that years to max, because we have a mix of different kinds of contracts. If you think about our teaching contract, we have 15 steps. And then, many of our other contracts, we only have six steps. And so, sometimes, what will happen is when you look at that years to max test, you'll fail that, because there's a disparate amount of steps that it takes to get to the top salary that you could earn, whether you're in a female class, a male class, or what they call a balanced class. And then, the third test is about exceptional pay. And in our case, that would be either groups that have longevity or performance pay. We only have one position in the district that has performance pay, and then, we do have a number of other contracts that have longevity pay. The calculation there is, again, do a male-dominated class have better access to exceptional pay, longevity, or performance than do female classes? And I'm happy to report that we, Kathleen has a piece of software that we put all the data together, we sort it, we do a bunch of different things with it, give it to her. She runs it through a piece of software that the state has, and with her experience, she comes back and says, when I feed this through the state's testing system, you, we believe you'll pass the test. And so, school districts, in the year that you are making the report, are required to submit this report by the end of January, despite the fact that the data is only based upon through December 31st. So, you really essentially have four to six weeks to put this together. But what we gave you here, John, was just the summary sheet, because what we did is we don't do this every year, so we looked back to the several last times that we had done this with the board, looked at the kind of information that we had provided. The last go-around, there were some things that we were found to be out of compliance with. And actually, part of the resolution, or not the resolution, but the motion the last time, was to make some salary modifications based upon how the software determined whether we were meeting those three requirements. And there were, I believe, two, some of you were on the board at that time, two or three adjustments that had to be made back then. The good news is that we've passed all three tests, and if you're interested in additional data behind this, I don't have it with me, but I have in my office, and we can certainly show that to you.
And are we to be looking at our comparison, or is this information strictly within the district, or are we comparing our equity statewide or among education, public education generally?
This is solely within our district to make sure that one particular class, I don't like that word, but that's what they call it, that one particular class of employees are not unfairly compensated at the expense of others, specifically when we look at female-dominated classes versus male-dominated classes. So, it's not us versus the rest of the state, it's us versus us.
Yeah. And this was never developed to do, looking at comparable worth across a variety of similar entities, to see, you know, what, what the pay schedule is at each of those entities. But it is the idea that within our own entity, we're able to demonstrate and pass the three tests involved. And again, what we found over the years, and this is actually one of the things that over the years, we have really asked the legislature to consider, do you need to keep doing this? Because there is a fairly significant expense, and there's a very significant amount of time involved in the part...
We lived this for several weeks, yes.
Matt, and Molly, and others in, in HR, to basically put all of the data together before Kathleen receives it, and then she will run it through the system, and because of her expertise, she can pinpoint if we have any areas where we need to make modifications. And as Matt said, in comparison to the last couple of times, where we've actually had to adjust certain classes, to basically eliminate those pieces, at this point, based on the state's software, we don't. Now, the other thing will be, you notice at the top, it says sign and click.
Yep.
And we will probably get the actual report back from the state. It could be three to six months from now.
Yeah. And the key thing is that we're just required by January 31st, and the board has to approve it.
To deliver it.
And so, that's why we brought it for your consideration this evening. We were trying to get it for the, the first meeting in January, but it would have been a table file item, and we just, this is not something we wanted to bring to the table file. You know, just, I really want to point out that the good work of previous administrators in looking at contracts and those, has gotten us to the point where we did not need to make any modifications. And that's really a very promising thing. And in fact, we've learned a number of different things, of suggestions that we can go forward as we look at working with bargaining groups, where we can continue to strengthen that equity and making sure that different groups that have different makeups are treated fairly, and helps us with the pay equity piece as we go forward. It's an honorable, it's an honorable piece for us to look at. There is some maybe unreasonable burden from the state, and I do have a question of who's actually looking at it, but that's not for me to decide. So, we run the report. We do it, because we want to be fair and conscientious to the people who serve our students every day. We want to make sure that they're paid in as equitable of a fashion as possible. We know that's not a perfect, it's not perfect, but for the purposes of the state test, in this case, we passed.
The other thing that, that we've done with this, John, over the last seven or eight years, is that this has also been the piece that has really spurred us to update all of our job descriptions, get very clear in terms of what are the essential skills in that job and the essential expectations, so that we're covered on that front, because the job description actually becomes the driver that generates the...
Points, yeah.
The points in the decision band method, which then is used to determine those groups that are at similar points, again, looking at male and female-dominated groups, to see if there's a, a significant discrepancy in terms of pay.
No, and normally, I prefer not to hire consultants for the district. I think we have a tremendous amount of expertise within our district administration team. But this is one area where it really pays for us to have that external consultant, because when we are creating new positions, we have a third set of eyes, somebody outside the district, who may ask a question that we hadn't seen. I think that was really a contributor, again, to the report being as solid as it is, because it's not just the curse of knowledge, people in the room who know what the job, someone else asks you questions, you say, oh, I hadn't thought of it that way. And I think that gives us the opportunity for a much better and tighter job description, and I think that it also helps us put those positions where they should be to begin with.
Great. Other questions? Okay. So...
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Matt, for going through that so thoroughly. So, we have in front of us now the pay equity report as an item for individual action, with the recommendation from administration that we approve it. I'd make that motion.
Same.
So, we've got a motion by Carrie and a second by Jeff to approve the pay equity report as presented by Matt. Any other discussion?
I just want to say, those are good questions that John brought up in the explanation. I think that was, I had some of those same thoughts, and I thank you for bringing that up, and thank Matt for hearing our explanation.
Good. All right. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the pay equity report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Items for information. We have two that were on the original, and we've got one, I would like to point out, that was in your table file. So, the first item for information is the school board committee appointments, and I want to thank everybody for their input. Denise was nice enough to bowl the changes from the previous year, so please take a look at that. I think it reflects what we discussed, and these are the appointments going forward for this year. The second item is to pay attention to the, the meeting on February 13th. Notice that we will be staying for a closed negotiation session following the board meeting. The third item for information that you have in your table file was the, was the school calendars. And I want to point out that it's not just the 2012, 2013, but the 2013 and 2014 as well, that we are asking the board to, and you, it's an item for information, so you have an opportunity to look on it, reflect on it. The hope is that we could take action on this proposed calendars on February 13th. I'd like to point out that when you review them, one thing to take note is that the spring breaks for St. Olaf and Carlton line up for those next two years, and the, the district was able to capitalize on that. You'll want to take a look at the, Ray Kudry, as well as Matt, was able to gather a lot of data from our, our staff, educational assistants, the teaching staff. Ray Kudry had his statistics class actually do a random sample parent survey, and it was just really professional, the data that they were able to provide, to, to kind of inform the calendar this year. So, other things to take note, that teacher workdays are a little different. They've added some, in terms of looking at quarters and providing opportunities at the quarter. And then, you'll want to look at the winter break and how that lays out. Part of it is just where does the holiday fall? So, I would just encourage board members to please pay attention, take a look at this, so that we're ready to take action at the next board meeting on February 13th.
I would just mention just a couple of other things. You'll see kind of a school calendar district interest that's on the last page of that document, which are kind of the things that, as we as a district sat down and worked with the Education Association in terms of thinking about the potential calendars, these are pieces we looked at. And then, I would also frame the fact that in terms of the quarter break piece, this is the first year that we had not done quarter breaks, and we put those two days off the calendar. And what came back very strongly from our staff was, they really needed that day at the end of the quarter to complete work for grading and complete work for preparing for conferences. Plus, what we found is that it, by not having those quarter days on the calendar, we significantly reduced our staff development opportunities, where we could get the entire teaching staff together in one group, and also get groups like our educational assistants, where we have specific training that oftentimes is not ready at the beginning of the year, because we have new needs that come along, but is, can be effectively provided at that quarter break. And so, in both of these calendars, we're putting that back. However, 2011, '12 was the only year we haven't had quarters. So, we're just kind of bringing those quarters back into the calendar discussion.
And one other thing I was going to point out, too, is if, once you start to look at this, you might have a question of why there's no school at Norfield Middle School, only on November 8th in 2013, 2014. And that's, there's a possible opportunity for the middle school instructional staff, that the national conference for middle schools is being held in Minneapolis. So, they're just trying to, since we're trying to look at the calendars two years out, Jeff Peshaw was trying to think ahead, and there's not too many times that that, that that national conference comes to Minneapolis. So, that's why that's kind of a, a different thing. So, anyway, that'll be something that we'll be, be able to discuss at the next meeting, but I wanted to point that out in our items for information. So, future meetings, Monday, February 13th, with the closed negotiation session following that, and Monday, February 27th, 2012. Now, I'm looking for a motion for adjournment. Jeff, your second?
Second.
Second by Ann. Motion for adjournment by Jeff. Second by Ann. All those in favor of adjourning our meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
More than your turn to vote.